Visit guidance of our chief minister. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, you are very much correct. Action to all of us, that's why uh uh this resolution finds it uh uh important that all of us in the parliament should uh um remind ourselves first and then remind also our staff, remind at the different offices, so that working together, we will be able to change our practices. So that is really the tenor of our resolution, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, second uh second to the last quick question, Mr. Speaker. Was there an opportunity for the chief minister to issue a directive to uh seeking for the enforcement of his earlier guidance, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I'm not aware of any further uh memorandum, but this is the standing memorandum and I believe that it is still effective. It has not been uh repealed and so that is uh uh valid and subsisting up to this point. And it is a matter of duty to all of us working within the autonomous region to also follow and observe it and uh encourage our other colleagues to also do the same.
Mi- Mr. Speaker, one final question. Uh what precluded, prevented the proponents to instead filing uh a bill that specifically prohibits and penalizes the use of single-use plastics, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, in due time, uh that will be filed. And um as of now, at the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources, we have already created a subcommittee on climate change, which will perhaps uh spearhead that effort. And uh I'm very confident that our, the members of the BTA, we are all, we are not only peace-loving, but we are also environmentally friendly. So I hope that uh your idea of really uh enacting a law on this particular issue will uh will materialize. Uh but uh at this point, uh even without that, we already have a standing memorandum from our chief minister that requires our full cooperation and uh observance.
Yes, uh so we have a memorandum from our chief minister, which simply appears, which appears to simply require a resolution of our, of the BTA for its agencies and ministries to follow. Uh thank you, min- uh uh, Mr. Speaker. Maraming maraming salamat. Thank you, ma'am proponent.
Mr. Speaker, next is MP Ampatuan, to be followed by MP Sinalindin.
MP Engineer Bangitan Ampatuan is recognized. You may proceed now.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Is the good proponent willing to answer some clarificatory questions?
Gladly, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, I read the resolution and talks about the memorandum of the chief minister. Um but um we, I haven't cut, come across with that memorandum. Um, did the memorandum cite the particular legal basis uh of coming up this, the coming up the memorandum? What are the legal bases? Uh is there an enumeration in the memorandum?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh this particular memorandum was released as early as June twenty-one, twenty nineteen. And um it did not specifically uh cited the the legal uh uh the pertinent rule, but uh the the part the Um, it simply uh cited the the obligation of the autonomous region to uh protect the environment.
So that means to say, um in the issuance, there was no particular legal basis that is uh that that defines why that memorandum. But instead, it's a moral obligation. That was the meaning of the, but um in real life, because um a policy should be um anchored on existing uh laws uh of the land. Um in the current setup, do we have a legal basis for the issuance and the and the proposed resolution? Uh will it be covered by the Solid, Solid Waste Management Act?
Uh as, as of now, uh Mr. Speaker, at the level of uh Senate and Congress, the bills on the banning of single-use plastic, which is actually being championed by Congressman um uh Paulo Duterte. He's one of the champion of this particular advocacy, is still pending. But it's, it is gaining ground and uh uh there's a lot already of uh um advocates that are pushing for this. But uh so at the level of the region, uh at the level of the national, we still don't have a specific law. But there is no preventing the regional government from requiring all of its offices uh to already observe the banning of single-use plastics. This particular resolution, uh this particular memorandum applies only to all offices, ministries and agencies within the BARM.
Okay, um uh but in other words, uh maybe one of the reasons why um the memorandum here um was not followed religiously is because um the appreciation of uh of the basis of the issuance. That could be one of the reasons, perhaps. But I, I would go to the cover, the coverage, no? Uh as you mentioned, uh Mr. Speaker, um it will cover the parliament and the uh uh offices of farm government. When we say um in the resolution, a regional government and um Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, does it imply that it also cover um offices and uh government offices and instrumentalities located not just in the BARM compound, but outside of the BARM compound?
Uh I believe, Mr. Speaker, that this particular memorandum, since it uh it is issued by the chief minister, applies to all offices and its direct supervision. So it applies uh to our parliament, to our ministries, the agencies, and our provincial offices under the ministries.
So provincial down to the barangay? Because we have schools that is covered by MBHDE. Does it cover the um the schools, for example? Because it has very big implication, no?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I will be very, very happy if it will cover uh up to the level of the barangay and the school. But at this point, the memorandum is only limited to our own offices within the regional government.
When you say regional government, only offices that are located within the BGC?
Not just within the BGC, Mr. Speaker, but our offices in the uh in the provinces and uh in cities, which is under the regional government. So it will not cover at this point the local government units, for instance, or the barangays.
Yes, but um the schools are extension of the ministry of basic higher and technical education. We need to clarify that if the schools are covered.
Um, Mr. Speaker, um if uh we are really mindful about this particular um um memorandum and if uh we are all mandated to implement it in our respective offices, it will be very helpful and healthy for all ministers. For example, in the, if the MBHDE can also issue its own administrative memorandum directing all of its schools to also ban the use of single-use plastics. So the hope is that from the effort directive of the chief minister, it should cascade in all of the um agencies that are within the uh within the umbrella of the regional government.
So, again, I want to be very specific about this because if we say they are covered, um the consequence will be, there will be a corresponding memorandum coming from the MBHDE that we are supposed to use a single banned uh anita, plastic material. So let us be very specific about this. Are we going to cover the schools?
At this point, uh uh, Mr. Speaker, the schools are not yet covered. Uh but MBHDE, since it is under the chief minister, is covered. And so uh if the, later on, if the, if this will really be fully implemented, then the, the concerned ministry should also issue the corresponding administrative order to direct all of its uh uh offices under it, its own jurisdiction to also issue the same uh banning of single-use plastic. But we are not yet there, even within the BGC. Uh we have not yet implemented it. So this is uh, we are taking this step by step and uh we hope that this time, we will really take this very uh religiously.
Thank you very much, uh Mr. Speaker, for that clarification. My second to the last question is that um with regards to the private sector. Because we are banning only, uh limited to the offices that we control. But it is inevitable that our offices engages, engage with with the private sector. For example, hindi naman maya rin ang, ng bottled water na ito ay parliament. Ang maya rin ito, ang ginagalingan ito ay private sector. So ano ang magiging implikasyon ng resolusyon na ito? Kung sakaling ipapasa natin, doon sa ating mga partner na private sector. Kasi very important na hindi lang tayo 'yung nakakalam ng responsibilidad natin, kundi maskin 'yung ating partner, lalong-lalo na 'yung private sector. So ano 'yung magiging implikasyon sa kanila nito once we, we pass this resolution?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the memorandum is very clear that uh it requires food concessionaires and caterers serving and providing for the meals or snacks during meetings, functions and seminars in the BARM to use containers made of paper, plant-based wrappers or reusable containers. So that means that uh this is really a requirement under this memorandum that all our caterers should also uh uh follow our own policy uh for as long as they want to operate within uh the Bangsamoro Government Center.
Mr. Speaker, you know, um in deciding a policy, we need to consider the end user, um, Mr. Speaker. In this case, um for example, when we outrightly um ban um but I have to be very clear that I am supporting this particular resolution. But uh the implication of banning immediately, single use of these plastic materials would require the suppliers to have available alternative, alternative resources that would replace the existing. Do you, do you, do you see that um that alternatives or do, do you foresee that uh our uh private sectors are ready in adapting and in, I, in adapting this measure? Because it takes time for them to convert, for example, itong bottled water, ano ang magiging alternative nila? Hindi naman pwede 'yung cap din na plastic, bawal din. So, for example, selupin. Ano ang alternative natin sa selupin? Pagbukit tayo sa market, doon sa Manila, kailangan 'yung 'yung ano, eco-bag, may dala kang eco-bag. Ready ba tayo may mga eco-bag na ba dito na pabili? So, um, Mr. Speaker, perhaps we need to really look at the readiness, readiness factor of our counterparts. Much as we want to, to fulfill the the obligation set by the memorandum order, we need also to check the readiness of our par- partner, private sector.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh this memorandum has been issued in twenty nineteen, four years ago. So I think uh in terms of readiness and preparation, that's a very long time uh given to all our concessionaires and caterers. And uh at this point, Mr. Speaker, we are really not in a situation of uh uh, we don't have the convenience of time in terms of preparation. Because at this very point, we are really dealing with a climate emergency. All over, this is, this is global. And even within our own communities, we, we can see and we can feel the impact of climate change. And so it's really uh incumbent upon all of us, especially this uh hall of the parliament, to really uh start the, take the first step to eliminate all the single-use plastics within our, this very hall. And that's uh, and then we, we, uh then we set the example to the other uh offices, we set the example to the other staff, until we cascade uh this, and then we introduce new changes in our practices. But the, the time to do it really is uh, should have been in twenty nineteen. But given the concerns already raised by our uh, our uh 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 sister MP here, uh uh, these are actually very valid concerns. But uh I believe that in terms of preparation, we have given them more than enough time.
Um, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Although um I would still want to look at it at as um while there is a policy, but there is a lack of, of uh monitoring and consulting the uh other partners. And and um um I think that one very important aspect that we need to consider in this resolution is that there should be a body that looks at how do we implement the memorandum order and the uh resolution? Um, um, may I know from the proponent, Mr. Speaker, if there was an office or unit within the office of the chief ministers, chief minister that tracks the implementation of a memorandum orders for the uh ministries and offices uh like this memorandum order? And uh we concluded that uh um there was no um, ano to? Uh we, we didn't follow the memorandum order?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, again, um I would like to uh think that this is all uh um maybe overtaken by so many demands and uh activities of uh all of us within the BARM. And so in terms of uh really pinpointing who's responsible for that, uh I could not really uh also respond to that directly. But um this particular resolution is really a call for action for all of us. And I am hoping that uh from this day on, we will all be uh working together and be responsible in calling out each other to constantly remind us that uh as stewards of our environment, we need to also change uh practices that is already overtaken by our, by the climate immer- uh emergency.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. My last question is that, um assuming that ipapas natin itong resolution and um ang mangyayari, may makikita pa rin tayo, lahat antlin na hindi magpapalo, what shall we do? Wala namang penalty provision or whatsoever. So ano 'yung kailangan nating gawin na mailagay natin dito sa resolution now to make sure that everybody follow, follows?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, that's a very good uh idea. And I think uh it was already raised earlier by MP Ambuloto that uh we might, uh we will really need to pass a law for this particular parliament, to pass a law, so that we will really be able to enforce and sanction violations. But at this point, uh just to, for a, for a, for a start, uh we have this particular memorandum that we can already begin with. But it will not discount the necessity of passing a law that will take care of our environment and address the uh challenges of climate uh emergency.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I manifest my support to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, proponent, may I be clarified? Is there any uh data which show that the single use of plastic really prevent or at least minimize global warming? Or it is only a ideal approach on the problem of uh uh global uh warming? Is there any data uh show that the single use of really prevent or minimize global warming? O ito ay isang pananaw lamang ng iilan sa pamamagitan na single use of plastike may iwasan ng may si, may scientific studies pa dito?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, there's a lot of uh studies already uh in the U- United Nations, World Bank, the European Union. They all have their science backing up the support that uh um we need to uh uh minimize, if not totally eliminate, the uh use of plastics. It's not just even single use. The, the call is really to uh 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 change our lifestyle. We should go back to the day, to the lifestyle of our grandmothers and grandfathers. Their lifestyle were really the most sustainable uh lifestyle. Uh but and so uh I think at this point, uh research will show that uh the use of single uh, the, the plastics is not necessarily related directly to global warming or global uh um the, the uh proliferation of uh carbon emission. But what is really, the direct impact is that it is really uh destroying our oceans. They throw all of this plastic into the ocean and they do not uh, they do not um uh decay for a very long time. That's why uh we need to uh protect our, our uh oceans and seas, especially for the Philippines and the Bangsamoro, which uh, which is an archipelago. And so we, the, the oceans uh is very much part of our territory.
Thank you. MP Doc Slinde is recognized.
Bismillah, Rahman Rahim. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I only have two questions here. But before I will go with my question, I would like to reiterate my full support in this resolution. First, I am an environmentalist and that's why I fully support this. And I have learned that in year two thousand, we already passed the Ecological Solid Waste Management Act. And it is designed to preserve the aquamarine life of all our seas and other bodies of water. That's why it's very important. I understand that the memorandum was issued in two thousand nineteen. I'm not yet part of this parliament and it was four years ago. For offices that did not follow the memorandum, can we be charged with insubordination, Mr. Speaker? Because this is a memorandum order and it is a very good memorandum designed to protect our environment. Yun po 'yung aking katanungan, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, legally speaking, uh we can't be charged of uh insubordination or disobedience because this is a written order. So tha- that is the short answer, uh legally speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And then follow up with that, does this cover our local government units? Because the police power rests on the LGUs that has a territorial jurisdiction in terms of preservation, protection and environmental assessment and monitoring as well as para po sa kanilang kapakanan ng mga mamamayan. Kasama po ba dito, Mr. Speaker, ang ating local government units being part of the regional government?
Mr. Speaker, and the, and the memorandum does not cover the LGUs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. So gusto lang po nating dagdagan ito na panawagan kasi ako po galit din ako sa plastic. Lalong-lalo na hindi 'yung bote, 'yung tao. Napatotoo tayo. Kaya nga po, mas palakasin po natin 'yung ating solid waste management na magredues para doon po maiwasan ang proliferation ng ating plastic waste or 'yung mga single-use plastics para sa, na pwedeng maka-harm sa ating environment. At kung hindi naman siya mabawasan, subukan nating gumawa ng paraan to reuse. Kasi itong mga bote po na ito, if properly used and reused, may pakinabang po silang malaki. Ang pangatlo po is, hanapan natin ng paraan na ma-recycle. Kung sakasakaling mayroon pang pwedeng paggamitan with the use of technology now na pwede natin silang ma-recycle in the future na mga activities natin. So yun lang po 'yung aking katanungan, uh Mr. Speaker. And rest assured po na, full po ang support ko sa resolution na ito. At sana po, hindi na natin makita itong bote na ito na plastic dito sa ating mga tables, palitan na lang po ng aqua flask. Okay lang po ako doon. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Uh I hope that uh in our next session, we will all be bringing our uh water container. Thank.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Speaker. Okay, uh Deputy Speaker Hassan, to be followed by MP Usman and then MP Makasalong and MP Mawani.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ang ano ko lang is that medyo matagal na masyado ang memorandum. Can we request na ang office, uh chief minister, babigyan tayo ng memorandum na ito? Uh para may study natin because of the fact that ang problema, kung advice lang, 'yung memorandum lang ganon, walang mga penalty ganon. Kasama't memorandum medyo, oh, hindi masyadong ano, effective, effective. So, uh, baka pwede natin i-improve ang memorandum o kaya pagka-utay ng batas uh para pagka- ba, ba, papagbawalan ng 'yung ano, to uh, oh uh tuban, 'yung the use of one-time plastic uh usage. Uh with that, I'd just like to request that, babigyan tayo ng ano, kano.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we will, we can secure a copy of that memorandum.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Because I'm looking, uh what I'm testing here is in the practical implementations of this resolution, that memorandum. Uh, yes, no less than this parliament is violating that prohibitions. Uh, we are using this uh in our cafeteria, in our uh lounge. Everybody is using this uh without uh thinking that there is, there was a memorandum two years ago banning use of this. And no less than this element is uh in a co- actual relationship with the caterer uh without telling them not use the, this, this single use uh of uh plastics in, in our cafeteria. Uh, aside from the penal provisions, have we suggested, yes, alternatives for our clients or concessioners on how we are going to deal, considering the convenience, the, the health, uh uh, the health certainty? uh from among us that uh I am using this without any doubt that this is uh not contaminated by any, considering that. Uh can we suggest uh, have we suggested alternatives?
I think.
Considering the convenience we have in our cafeteria, in, in our offices, uh if we are going to ban this so-called single use?
Um, Mr. Speaker, memorandum itself already provide for some alternatives like the use of uh uh contents made of paper. I think even our uh big establishments and restaurants in Manila, the big hotels there, they're already using the paper uh based uh containers. We can, there's also a suggestion to use plant-based wrappers or reusable containers. So these are, these are alternatives that are already being uh suggested in the memorandum itself for consideration of our caterers.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh I was thinking of the saying, "It's easier said than done." Uh practical implement because we contracted out, yes, we have a contractual obligations and it is somehow additional cost on the part of the uh, what's this, of the caterer uh to look for an alternatives to serve us more conveniently, to serve our offices more conveniently, to serve in our meeting more conveniently and health-conscious. So I'm suggesting uh, because general, general observation, Mr. Speaker, we have so mu- many resolutions, memorandum uh from our offices, from this parliament, but somehow we are looking for an implement or following up of those resolutions. I'm afraid this, this solutions again of the parliament will go to no effect at all when we do not even suggest an alternatives on how we are going to stop, ban, really, the single use of this plastic not in, even in our uh cafeteria. So I, I was looking for our, the moral ascendance parliament to call for banning while we cannot even prohibit from us abusing again con- considering that conveniency and uh health uh benefits of using that single uh use of this.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh the current resolution calling for the full implementation and observance of this particular memorandum from the Chief Minister is really a challenge for each and everyone. We cannot really just uh assign this a particular office or a particular staff or a particular official. The change that we want to happen should begin within us. So we, I think that's really the, the, the way to go. If we want to implement this, we can gain it uh from the halls of this parliament and then later let us uh all work together, cooperate, support one another, so that we can cascade this effort to larger community of the Bangsa Moro Government Center. And perhaps if they see that this is a very good example coming from our policymakers, then we will be able to also inspire others to do the same. That is really the approach that I want to take here so that uh the care of the environment is a collective effort.
Mr. Speaker, I recognize the urgency of this resolution and the implementation of this. But I, I am looking for the consequential uh effect of this resolution. If, if this resolution will only go to waste, uh for example, we are continuing uh patronizing by ourselves, by this very parliament of drinking in uh in our cafeteria, by this battle, in this battle. So and uh, Mr. Speaker, we have a contractual relationship. In, does it mean that we are going to breach that contractual relationship with our uh with our caterers, for example, and give them additional cost on how they are looking to look for alternatives in order for us not to continuously violate our rule, our resolution, our, that is my worry, uh, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I think uh the challenge for all of us uh is not really, we are not rea- if we want to protect our environment and if we want to be responsible towards of our environment, we cannot really just be after of convenience. We really have to do our own sacrifice. We need to uh take the extra effort so that we will really be able to make a difference. Because if we keep on uh, if we keep on looking for convenience, then plastic is really the way to go. You can just use it and throw it uh uh after. That's the, that is the uh, the culture, the plastic culture uh or that promotes disposable mentality, which we want to uh, which we now want to uh minimize if not uh uh eliminate because uh there is a larger problem of environmental uh climate emergency where we are already uh being uh, where, where we already affected.
I, uh, Mr. Speaker, we absolutely agree with the Honorable Deputy Ploder on that note. Uh, the urgency, of course, is uh there and support the, the call. But uh again, on the practical implementation of our resolution. Because once we approve, I do not want to see this battle anymore in this parliament for us to set by example to have the moral ascendancy for our uh janitors outside. Because how we are then implement, we are using this in the office of the Chief Minister, in your meetings. And I hope for the absolute top in ban, penalize everybody if we are going to including this. I am looking for the practical implementation of this. And of course, my next, uh, you've already answered. Uh, if you are really concerned, yes, we need to teach our children and we need to include schools on how we are going to stop. It's okay in the remote area, do not have an access to this battle. But mind you, if there's an official event in the school, our officials from the division office, if, if, if they are visiting schools, they do not want to drink. The, our children is drinking in remote area. If they are served with this, they will not drink without this battle. Na sinasabi nila, baka magkami, iba kami, baka magkaano-ano pa kami. And this is the very water that uh our children is drinking in their areas. And we are, when we are going to visit their area, we do not want to drink that water. So I, I, I am imagining, I am in joining for this element to be respected and ascendancy to implement our very only solution. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
MP uh Marjanin Makasalong is your recognized.
Uh, I would be like, na siya, niro James Millay Rahman Rahim, alhamdulillah, binasta inaalaikum. Salamualaikum, marhamatullahi wa barakatuh. And a very good afternoon. Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh isang question lang ho sa ating proponent, if she is willing?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, um, I know you have already given the answer when they ask, ano ho 'yung single uh use plastic? Ano ho nga, just to
'yung uh single-use plastic po ay 'yung mga plastics, containers na ginagamit lang natin once. After that, uh pwede mo ng uh itatapon. So for example, the Tupperware plastic that you are using in your homes na mga, di ba meron time for where, hindi naman natin 'yan tinatapon. After we use it, we wash it and we clean and then store it. Dito 'yun, plastic, hindi siya single use. Single use, yun lang 'yung mga ginaga- disposable.
Um, it's very uh, it's very good that na kahit uma-plastic, pero kung hindi naman ho na upon after we use, kasi ginagamit pa natin in the ano, it's not part of this, right?
Yes.
Ang, ang point ko lang ho, uh, Mr. Speaker, or asking that question is that we know and pati ho 'yung mga ibang members of the parliament ay sinabi ho nila 'yung mga challenges on how really to implement this uh for example, the, the memorandum of the Chief Minister and now the resolution is parliament. But I think I really support the author uh of this uh resolution kasi and especially when she said na, let's start ho sa ating mga sarili. Uh, of course, ang dami ho mga challenges para ho i-implement yun and um they are making also the point uh na talaga ho may mga challenges. But I think kung hindi ho natin simulan, baka mahirapan at lalo ho tatagal ang implementation ng uh memorandum na yun or ang resolution na to in that case. So ang sa akin lang ho, Mr. Speaker, is to support this and I think pilikan ko pa to sa aking opisina and I would like to tayo ng tumbler para ho, para ho like kung irerepel ho natin, oh, di ba, di ba busing, uh, kung irerepel ho natin kahit papaano, hindi ho tayo maka-contribute doon sa uh sinasada na gusto natin ipagbawal. Ang mga ganito ho mineral water, bagunatin yun muna for the meantime uh from, for me personally, medyo ho talagang mahirap yun na uh outside ay magiging bawal na lahat dito. But let's start from ourselves muna. So yun lang ho, Mr. Speaker, I really support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
MP Mawalil, and then finally, can we uh, can we end with MP Ramos on Zoom?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
MP Mawalil is recognized. This is not really an interpretation, manifestation of support and to clarify some issues. Do you believe that this resolution is part of the Sustainable Development Goals? One of the Sustainable Development Goals?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So in effect, Mr. Speaker, we are actually complying to the uh one of the goals in the SDGs, uh indicated in the SDGs. Do you also believe that the basis of the uh um I, I am not sure if you're privy to this uh fact, but during the previous BTA, the the memorandum order was also cited in the deliberation of the Committee on Accounts in the appropriation and the allocation of the food and during uh uh budget sessions, committee meetings and consultation. It was actually a condition to the protocol division during the budget deliberation that they should observe waste manage, waste-related management policies. And one of that is the uh pertaining to the memorandum issued by the Chief Minister. But this is actually the first policy that we uh we are tackling related to the single uh use plastic because uh the, the earlier policy was issued by the Chief Minister. So my input on this matter is that, can we as a parliament or it's, it's a strong case that we cite the existing memorandum issue a separate policy on this matter, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I think uh from, from this particular resolution, we can uh navigate the other challenges on the environmental protection that we need to do. And uh there are already several ideas here like the passage of a law on banning the single use of plastics or coming up with a law on climate change adaptation. And perhaps uh from the different ministries, we can also issue our own uh administrative memorandum and even in the schools. So there are so many ideas coming now from our very rich discussion and I hope that we will all be, uh, we will all follow through on all of this. And I'm glad to hear that the Committee on Accounts already had an earlier effort to implement this.
Another manifestation, Mr. Chair, is uh without a bill passed by this legislative body and also by the National Congress, can we as a parliament craft a policy through a resolution that will implement a ban on single-use plastic?
Yes, I think that will be, uh, if uh the parliament is willing to do that, that, that is very desirable.
I have no objection with this resolution, Mr. Speaker. However, there's really a confusion, the dichotomy between the D G O T, the government of the day and the parliament. So my stand here is maybe we can revise the title of resolution and perhaps a resolution banning the since our co-MP's calling here is appealing that we should start within our premises. So maybe we can start this, go with that. And also to cite specific um areas. For example, Mr. Speaker, in, in Kenya, uh there are designated areas which they implement uh single use, the, the use of single uh use plastic such as um protected areas such as forests, uh public parks, among other things. So that's it, that is just my, my, my manifestation, Mr. Speaker, Chief Minister, the memorandum order, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
MP Ramos on Zoom, Mr. Speaker?
MP Ramos is recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Ang aking pong manifestation ay a manifestation of support. Uh, buong puso ko pong, sumuso, buong puso po akong sumusuporta sa 2019 pang sa Bangsa Moro Center in Mosti Minnanaw. Uh, as was mentioned by our uh good proponent, uh nasabi po niya na almost four years na nga po itong simulanong nakalipas, no, nung uh ipasitin itong uh, itong uh memorandum order. Pero um, napapatuloy pa rin 'yung paggamit natin, no, at paglaganap ng mga plastics sa Bangsa Moro Government Center. So uh, uh this is a very uh good step, no? umpisa pa lamang po ito at uh kailangan po nating tutukan, no, ang paggamit ng mga alternatibong materyales tulad ng uh puppet, plant-based wrappers, reusable containers at 'yung pagsusulong na paggamit ng mga reusable drinking containers. Nabanggit din kanina 'yung tumblers, mugs, at 'yung mga biodegradable food packs, no? So uh, uh panahon na po, no, pang tunay na itaguyod po natin 'yung ban of single-use plastic policy para po sa kalikasan at kinabukasan ang ating So if uh the uh good proponent would allow, I would to be associated with uh this measure. Uh, maraming salamat.
Gladly, Mr. Speaker, uh we will gladly include uh the good MP as a maker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of amendment.
The period of amendment is now open. Uh, I think we have to uh suspend 15 minutes for ASAP.
Okay, um, Mr. Speaker, I move for a, a break, 15-minute break to allow those wish to enter an amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, 15 minutes for ASAP.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. 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 Session resume. 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 Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We are now in the period of amendment. 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 We are now in the period of amendment.
We are now in the period of amendment.
We are now in the period of amendment. May we recognize MP Ampatuan, Mr. Speaker. 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 May we recognize MP Ampatuan, Mr. Speaker.
May we recognize MP Ampatuan, Mr. Speaker. Yes, MP Ampatuan is recognized. Ah, 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 yes, MP Ampatuan is recognized. Yeah. Yeah, ask for one minute suspension. Ah, yes, one minute suspension.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. 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 The proposed amendment is an inclusion of two whereas's The proposed amendment is an inclusion of two whereas's The proposed amendment is an inclusion of two whereas's The proposed amendment is an inclusion of two whereas's The proposed amendment is an inclusion of two whereas's The proposed amendment is an inclusion of two whereas's just to ensure that there will be proper dissemination of information. just to ensure that there will be proper dissemination of information. just to ensure that there will be proper dissemination of information. just to ensure that there will be proper dissemination of information. just to ensure that there will be proper dissemination of information. just to ensure that there will be proper dissemination of information. And second is to ensure that the concerned ministry And second is to ensure that the concerned ministry And second is to ensure that the concerned ministry And second is to ensure that the concerned ministry And second is to ensure that the concerned ministry And second is to ensure that the concerned ministry as stipulated as stipulated in the memorandum order will comply to the order of the chief minister. as stipulated in the memorandum order will comply to the order of the chief minister. as stipulated in the memorandum order will comply to the order of the chief minister. as stipulated in the memorandum order will comply to the order of the chief minister. as stipulated in the memorandum order will comply to the order of the chief minister. in the memorandum order will comply to the order of the chief minister. So the first whereas is whereas the Bangsa Moro Information Office So the first whereas is whereas the Bangsa Moro Information Office So the first whereas is whereas the Bangsa Moro Information Office So the first whereas is whereas the Bangsa Moro Information Office So the first whereas is whereas the Bangsa Moro Information Office So the first whereas is whereas the Bangsa Moro Information Office is directed to develop and disseminate information materials 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 in line with the implementation of this resolution. 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 Siguro may implementation. 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 Or in this resolution. 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 Parang may kulang. 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 In line with the implementation of this resolution. 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 Wherefore? 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 Wherefore?
Yeah, another word. 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 Yeah, another word.
Siya nalang pa ano counter. 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 Ah, wherefore? Ah, wherefore? Ah, wherefore? Ah, wherefore? Ah, wherefore? Ah, wherefore?
Um, Mr. Speaker, considering that this is already an action point, Um, Mr. Speaker, considering that this is already an action point, Um, Mr. Speaker, considering that this is already an action point, Um, Mr. Speaker, considering that this is already an action point, Um, Mr. Speaker, considering that this is already an action point, Um, Mr. Speaker, considering that this is already an action point, our counterproposal is to transfer this to the wherefore section. our counterproposal is to transfer this to the wherefore section. our counterproposal is to transfer this to the wherefore section. our counterproposal is to transfer this to the wherefore section. our counterproposal is to transfer this to the wherefore section. our counterproposal is to transfer this to the wherefore section. But as is, the statement is accepted except that from whereas But as is, the statement is accepted except that from whereas But as is, the statement is accepted except that from whereas But as is, the statement is accepted except that from whereas But as is, the statement is accepted except that from whereas But as is, the statement is accepted except that from whereas we change it to wherefore. 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 we change it to wherefore.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker. 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 The second proposal resolution is, ah, resolution whereas is The second proposal resolution is, ah, resolution whereas is The second proposal resolution is, ah, resolution whereas is The second proposal resolution is, ah, resolution whereas is The second proposal resolution is, ah, resolution whereas is The second proposal resolution is, ah, resolution whereas is whereas the Ministry of Environment, Natural Resources and Energy or MENRE whereas the Ministry of Environment, Natural Resources and Energy or MENRE whereas the Ministry of Environment, Natural Resources and Energy or MENRE whereas the Ministry of Environment, Natural Resources and Energy or MENRE whereas the Ministry of Environment, Natural Resources and Energy or MENRE whereas the Ministry of Environment, Natural Resources and Energy or MENRE is tasked to pernise an annual report to the parliament is tasked to pernise an annual report to the parliament is tasked to pernise an annual report to the parliament is tasked to pernise an annual report to the parliament is tasked to pernise an annual report to the parliament is tasked to pernise an annual report to the parliament on the compliance of this resolution. 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 I think this is very important in order to ensure I think this is the, this is very important I think this is the, this is very important I think this is the, this is very important I think this is the, this is very important I think this is the, this is very important in order to ensure that there is an oversight agency in order to ensure that there is an oversight agency in order to ensure that there is an oversight agency in order to ensure that there is an oversight agency in order to ensure that there is an oversight agency that there is an oversight agency that, I mean, there is an implementing agency that, I mean, there is an implementing agency that, there is an agency that, I mean, there is an implementing agency that, there is an agency that, I mean, there is an implementing agency that, there is an agency that, I mean, there is an implementing agency that, there is an agency that, I mean, there is an implementing agency that, there is an agency that there is an agency that looks at the implementation of the memorandum order. that looks at the implementation of the memorandum order. that looks at the implementation of the memorandum order. that looks at the implementation of the memorandum order. that looks at the implementation of the memorandum order. that looks at the implementation of the memorandum order. And their report should be pernised to this parliament. And their report should be pernised to this parliament. And their report should be pernised to this parliament. And their report should be pernised to this parliament. And their report should be pernised to this parliament. And their report should be pernised to this parliament.
Same manifestation, Mr. Speaker. 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 We accept the amendment except we transfer this 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 to the wherefore section of the resolution. 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 Thank you, Mr. Speaker. 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 Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. That's my proposals. 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 Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker?
To MP Bantong Proleader. 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 To MP Bantong Proleader.
Next is MP Amboluto, Mr. Speaker. 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 Next is MP Amboluto, Mr. Speaker.
MP Amboluto is recognized.
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 Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
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 Our proposal is a simple recommendation to instead of reminding,
Our proposal is a simple recommendation to instead of reminding,
Our proposal is a simple recommendation to instead of reminding,
Our proposal is a simple recommendation to instead of reminding,
Our proposal is a simple recommendation to instead of reminding,
Our proposal is a simple recommendation to instead of reminding, simply reminding the appropriate offices is to make it more direct,
simply reminding the appropriate offices is to make it more direct,
simply reminding the appropriate offices is to make it more direct,
simply reminding the appropriate offices is to make it more direct,
simply reminding the appropriate offices is to make it more direct,
simply reminding the appropriate offices is to make it more direct,
direct directory.
direct directory.
direct directory.
direct directory.
direct directory.
direct directory.
As here, it is to the last, the first wherefore paragraph would read,
As here, it is to the last, the first wherefore paragraph would read,
As here, it is to the last, the first wherefore paragraph would read,
As here, it is to the last, the first wherefore paragraph would read,
As here, it is to the last, the first wherefore paragraph would read,
As here, it is to the last, the first wherefore paragraph would read, it is served by resolved by the bangsa transition to direct parliamentary,
it is served by resolved by the bangsa transition to direct parliamentary,
it is served by resolved by the bangsa transition to direct parliamentary,
it is served by resolved by the bangsa transition to direct parliamentary,
it is served by resolved by the bangsa transition to direct parliamentary,
it is served by resolved by the bangsa transition to direct parliamentary,
parliamentary offices,
parliament offices,
parliament offices,
parliament offices,
parliament offices,
parliament offices,
parliament offices, ministries and agencies of the bangsa moro
parliament offices, ministries and agencies of the bangsa moro
parliament offices, ministries and agencies of the bangsa moro
parliamentary offices, ministries and agencies of the bangsa moro
parliament offices, ministries and agencies of the bangsa moro
parliament offices, ministries and agencies of the bangsa moro
include add remove the comma from ministries.
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 Madam, ano madam, can I further introduce?
Ah, 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 madam, ano madam, can I further introduce?
Instead na ano to direct ministries, ministries, offices
Instead na ano, 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 to direct ministries, ministries, offices
and agencies of the bangsa moro autonomous region
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 including those of the bangsa moro BTA parliament and agencies.
including those of the bangsa moro BTA parliament and agencies.
including those of the bangsa moro BTA parliament and agencies.
including those of the bangsa moro BTA parliament and agencies.
including those of the bangsa moro BTA parliament and agencies.
including those of the bangsa moro BTA parliament and agencies.
And agencies of the bangsa moro autonomous region.
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 Autonomous region and then after the mindanao comma
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 including those of the BTA parliament.
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 According to? According to? According to? According to? According to? According to?
Those, those of, thank you, thank you, of the BTP, of the BTA parliament.
Those, those of, thank you, thank you, of the BTP, of the BTA parliament.
Those, those of, thank you, thank you, of the BTP, of the BTA parliament.
Those, those of, thank you, thank you, of the BTP, of the BTA parliament.
Those, those of, thank you, thank you, of the BTP, of the BTA parliament.
Those, those of, thank you, thank you, of the BTP, of the BTA parliament.
Those of
Those of
Those of
Those of
Those of
Those of
BTA parliament.
BTA parliament.
BTA parliament.
BTA parliament.
BTA parliament.
BTA parliament.
Yes, that is our humble proposal.
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 I genuinely accept, Mr. Speaker. 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 I genuinely accept, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, ah, ah. 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 Quere lang, quere lang, no? 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 Quere lang, quere lang, no?
Indeed plastic genuine acceptance 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 Indeed plastic genuine acceptance
It's just a query. It's just a query.
of your amendment. 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 Of your amendment.
Ah, this chair would like to make iris. 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 Then the chief minister direct ang parliament. 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 Then the chief minister direct ang parliament.
Mr. Speaker, ah.
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 Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Yes, ah.
Yes, ah.
Yes, ah.
Yes, ah.
Yes, ah.
Yes, ah.
Mr. Speaker, this is already our parliament speaking, Mr., sir, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this is already our parliament speaking, Mr., sir, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this is already our parliament speaking, Mr., sir, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this is already our parliament speaking, Mr., sir, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this is already our parliament speaking, Mr., sir, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, this is already our parliament speaking, Mr., sir, Mr. Speaker.
It is already the parliament in this case that is saying
It is already the parliament in this case that is saying
It is already the parliament in this case that is saying
It is already the parliament in this case that is saying
It is already the parliament in this case that is saying
It is already the parliament in this case that is saying
that we include the BTA parliament in abiding by the guidance
that we include the BTA parliament in abiding by the guidance
that we include the BTA parliament in abiding by the guidance
that we include the BTA parliament in abiding by the guidance
that we include the BTA parliament in abiding by the guidance
that we include the BTA parliament in abiding by the guidance
of our honorable and beloved Chief Minister, Mr. Speaker.
of our honorable and beloved chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
of our honorable and beloved chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
of our honorable and beloved chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
of our honorable and beloved chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
of our honorable and beloved chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, yang ano kulang honest that can the chief minister direct parliament? Yeah, yang ano kulang honest that can the chief minister direct parliament? Yeah, yang ano kulang honest that can the chief minister direct parliament? Yeah, yang ano kulang honest that can the chief minister direct parliament? Yeah, yang ano kulang honest that can the chief minister direct parliament? Yeah, yang ano kulang honest that can the chief minister direct parliament?
We are not, Mr. Chief, Mr. Speaker, we are not asking the chief minister
We are not, Mr. Chief, Mr. Speaker, we are not asking the chief minister
We are not, Mr. Chief, Mr. Speaker, we are not asking the chief minister
We are not, Mr. Chief, Mr. Speaker, we are not asking the chief minister
We are not, Mr. Chief, Mr. Speaker, we are not asking the chief minister
We are not, Mr. Chief, Mr. Speaker, we are not asking the chief minister
to direct the parliament, but it is already the parliament.
to direct the parliament, but it is already the parliament.
to direct the parliament, but it is already the parliament.
to direct the parliament, but it is already the parliament.
to direct the parliament, but it is already the parliament.
to direct the parliament, but it is already the parliament.
While the fact the chief minister has supervision and control of parliament. While the fact the chief minister has supervision and control of parliament. While the fact the chief minister has supervision and control of parliament. While the fact the chief minister has supervision and control of parliament. While the fact the chief minister has supervision and control of parliament. While the fact the chief minister has supervision and control of parliament.
No, Mr. Speaker.
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 He does not have a supervision nor control over the parliament.
He does not have a supervision nor control over the parliament.
He does not have a supervision nor control over the parliament.
He does not have a supervision nor control over the parliament.
He does not have a supervision nor control over the parliament.
He does not have a supervision nor control over the parliament.
And neither are we proposing less remotely intimidating, Mr. Speaker,
And neither are we proposing less remotely intimating, Mr. Speaker,
And neither are we proposing less remotely intimating, Mr. Speaker,
And neither are we proposing less remotely intimating, Mr. Speaker,
And neither are we proposing less remotely intimating, Mr. Speaker,
And neither are we proposing less remotely intimating, Mr. Speaker,
that the chief minister will be directing us.
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 Instead in here, we are the bangsa moro transition authority
Instead in here, we are the bangsa moro transition authority
Instead in here, we are the bangsa moro transition authority
Instead in here, we are the bangsa moro transition authority
Instead in here, we are the bangsa moro transition authority
Instead in here, we are the bangsa moro transition authority
resolving to direct ministries, offices, agencies, including the BTA parliament
resolving to direct ministries, offices and agencies, including the BTA parliament
resolving to direct ministries, offices and agencies, including the BTA parliament
resolving to direct ministries, offices and agencies, including the BTA parliament
resolving to direct ministries, offices and agencies, including the BTA parliament
resolving to direct ministries, offices and agencies, including the BTA parliament
to follow and immediately implement memorandum.
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 It is by this provision, Mr. Speaker, it is like an implied accession
It is by this provision, Mr. Speaker, it is like an implied accession
It is by this provision, Mr. Speaker, it is like an implied accession
It is by this provision, Mr. Speaker, it is like an implied accession
It is by this provision, Mr. Speaker, it is like an implied accession
It is by this provision, Mr. Speaker, it is like an implied accession
to the guidance of the chief minister.
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 We are acceding with this resolution, Mr. Speaker.
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 Because as the good honorable Usman was saying,
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 we cannot simply direct other people when we ourselves are not covered
we cannot simply direct other people when we ourselves are not covered
we cannot simply direct other people when we ourselves are not covered
we cannot simply direct other people when we ourselves are not covered
we cannot simply direct other people when we ourselves are not covered
we cannot simply direct other people when we ourselves are not covered
by the same guidance.
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 So in this instance, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to the guidance
So in this instance, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to the guidance
So in this instance, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to the guidance
So in this instance, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to the guidance
So in this instance, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to the guidance
So in this instance, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to the guidance
of the chief minister.
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 of the chief minister without surrendering our independence or autonomy
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 from the office of the chief minister.
from the office of the chief minister, we are by this case resolving
from the office of the chief minister, we are by this case resolving
from the office of the chief minister, we are by this case resolving
from the office of the chief minister, we are by this case resolving
from the office of the chief minister, we are by this case resolving
We are by this case resolving that we will by our own volition
that we will by our own volition follow and accede
that we will by our own volition follow and accede
that we will by our own volition follow and accede
that we will by our own volition follow and accede
that we will by our own volition follow and accede
follow and accede to the wisdom and guidance of the chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
to the wisdom and guidance of the chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
to the wisdom and guidance of the chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
to the wisdom and guidance of the chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
to the wisdom and guidance of the chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
to the wisdom and guidance of the chief minister, Mr. Speaker.
Well, well, ah, kailangan legal, anong ganon? Ah, 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 well, well, ah, kailangan legal, anong ganon? Can the chief minister, you know, can direct parliament because of the fact that Can the chief minister, you know, can direct parliament? Can the chief minister, you know, can direct parliament? Can the chief minister, you know, can direct parliament? Can the chief minister, you know, can direct parliament? Can the chief minister, you know, can direct parliament? Because of the fact that 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 ah, yes, ah, yeah. 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 Well, I accept that, I accept it. 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 But this is just a question of, of authority, of authority. But this is just a question of, of authority, of authority. But this is just a question of, of authority, of authority. But this is just a question of, of authority, of authority. But this is just a question of, of authority, of authority. But this is just a question of, of authority, of authority.
We do understand, Mr. Speaker, we do, all of us here, Mr. Speaker,
We do understand, Mr. Speaker, we do, all of us here, Mr. Speaker,
We do understand, Mr. Speaker, we do, all of us here, Mr. Speaker,
We do understand, Mr. Speaker, we do, all of us here, Mr. Speaker,
We do understand, Mr. Speaker, we do, all of us here, Mr. Speaker,
We do understand, Mr. Speaker, we do, all of us here, Mr. Speaker,
appreciate the concern of the chief, of the president speaker.
appreciate the concern of the chief, of the president speaker.
appreciate the concern of the chief, of the president speaker.
appreciate the concern of the chief, of the president speaker.
appreciate the concern of the chief, of the president speaker.
appreciate the concern of the chief, of the president speaker.
We do appreciate that, Mr. 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 Speaker.
Because the question there, can the chief minister direct? Because the question there, can the chief minister direct? Because the question there, can the chief minister direct? Because the question there, can the chief minister direct? Because the question there, can the chief minister direct? Because the question there, can the chief minister direct?
We are not.
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 Because if we can direct meaning you are in control over them. Because if we can direct, meaning you are in control over them. Because if we can direct, meaning you are in control over them. Because if we can direct, meaning you are in control over them. Because if we can direct, meaning you are in control over them. Because if we can direct, meaning you are in control over them.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, 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 yes, Mr. Speaker.
Well, anyway, yeah. 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 Well, anyway, yeah.
We do not, there is no intimation, Mr. Speaker, just for the record.
We do not, there is no intimation, Mr. Speaker, just for the record.
We do not, there is no intimation, Mr. Speaker, just for the record.
We do not, there is no intimation, Mr. Speaker, just for the record.
We do not, there is no intimation, Mr. Speaker, just for the record.
We do not, there is no intimation, Mr. Speaker, just for the record.
We are not intimating in any manner that the chief minister
We are not intimating in any manner that the chief minister
We are not intimating in any manner that the chief minister
We are not intimating in any manner that the chief minister
We are not intimating in any manner that the chief minister
We are not intimating in any manner that the chief minister
is, will be directing us.
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 Instead, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to his guidance.
Instead, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to his guidance.
Instead, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to his guidance.
Instead, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to his guidance.
Instead, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to his guidance.
Instead, Mr. Speaker, we are acceding to his guidance.
Meaning we are as if we are adapting and incorporating in this resolution
Meaning we are as if we are adapting and incorporating in this resolution
Meaning we are as if we are adapting and incorporating in this resolution
Meaning we are as if we are adapting and incorporating in this resolution
Meaning we are as if we are adapting and incorporating in this resolution
Meaning we are as if we are adapting and incorporating in this resolution
the guidance of the chief minister to his ministries.
the guidance of the chief minister to his ministries.
the guidance of the chief minister to his ministries.
the guidance of the chief minister to his ministries.
the guidance of the chief minister to his ministries.
the guidance of the chief minister to his ministries.
We are adopting it to be part of our processes, Mr. Speaker.
We are adapting it to be part of our processes, Mr. Speaker.
We are adapting it to be part of our processes, Mr. Speaker.
We are adapting it to be part of our processes, Mr. Speaker.
We are adapting it to be part of our processes, Mr. Speaker.
We are adapting it to be part of our processes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, because at national level, meaning the president can direct congress. Yes, because at national level, meaning the president can direct congress. Yes, because at national level, meaning the president can direct congress. Yes, because at national level, meaning the president can direct congress. Yes, because at national level, meaning the president can direct congress. Yes, because at national level, meaning the president can direct congress.
Yeah, no, 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 we don't do that, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, no, 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 we don't do that, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, no, 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 we don't do that, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, no, 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 we don't do that, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, no, 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 we don't do that, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, no, 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 we don't do that, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, parang ganon, parang ganon yun eh. Yeah, parang ganon yun, 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 parang ganon yun eh.
Depok with you, Mr. Speaker.
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 We will never, with due respect to our chief minister,
We will never, with due respect to our chief minister,
We will never, with due respect to our chief minister,
We will never, with due respect to our chief minister,
We will never, with due respect to our chief minister,
We will never, with due respect to our chief minister,
who is also a leading member of the BTA, who is also the leader of the BTA
who is also a leading member of the BTA, who is also the leader of the BTA
who is also a leading member of the BTA, who is also the leader of the BTA
who is also a leading member of the BTA, who is also the leader of the BTA
who is also a leading member of the BTA, who is also the leader of the BTA
who is also a leading member of the BTA, who is also the leader of the BTA
as provided in Article 16, Section 3, notwithstanding that, Mr. Speaker,
as provided in Article 16, Section 3, notwithstanding that, Mr. Speaker,
as provided in Article 16, Section 3, notwithstanding that, Mr. Speaker,
as provided in Article 16, Section 3, notwithstanding that, Mr. Speaker,
as provided in Article 16, Section 3, notwithstanding that, Mr. Speaker,
as provided in Article 16, Section 3, notwithstanding that, Mr. Speaker,
and without intimating that he controls the parliament,
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 we are saying here is that here we are including the BTA parliament
we are saying here is that here we are including the BTA parliament
we are saying here is that here we are including the BTA parliament
we are saying here is that here we are including the BTA parliament
we are saying here is that here we are including the BTA parliament
we are saying here is that here we are including the BTA parliament
in simply following and implementing memorandum order.
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 We are only adapting, by this resolution, we are adapting.
We are only adapting, by this resolution, we are adapting.
We are only adapting, by this resolution, we are adapting.
We are only adapting, by this resolution, we are adapting.
We are only adapting, by this resolution, we are adapting.
We are only adapting, by this resolution, we are adapting.
But, Mr. Speaker, if, so, that's my another.
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 So, Mr. Speaker? 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 So, Mr. Speaker?
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. 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 Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Okay, because, ah. 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 Okay, because, ah.
Ah. Ah. Ah. Ah.
Ah. Well, well, ah, well, yeah, it's all right. 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 But because I'm just thinking, you know, of control and supervision But because I'm just thinking, you know, of control and supervision But because I'm just thinking, you know, of control and supervision But because I'm just thinking, you know, of control and supervision But because I'm just thinking, you know, of control and supervision But because I'm just thinking, you know, of control and supervision on who held the power and authority over parliament. on who held the power and authority over parliament. on who held the power and authority over parliament. on who held the power and authority over parliament. on who held the power and authority over parliament. on who held the power and authority over parliament. Because by directing the over parliament, meaning that the control Because by directing the over parliament, meaning that the control Because by directing the over parliament, meaning that the control Because by directing the over parliament, meaning that the control Because by directing the over parliament, meaning that the control Because by directing the over parliament, meaning that the control and authority over parliament. 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 Ah, ganu ganu ang. 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 Ah, ganu ganu ang.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. 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 So I think the proponent is ready to accept? So I think the proponent is ready to accept? So I think the proponent is ready to accept? So I think the proponent is ready to accept? So I think the proponent is ready to accept? So I think the proponent is ready to accept? Mr. Speaker, I already accepted early on, okay. 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 Thank you, Mr. Speaker. 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 With this, I move to terminate the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker. With this, I move to terminate the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker. With this, I move to terminate the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker. With this, I move to terminate the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker. With this, I move to terminate the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker. With this, I move to terminate the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, dahil sa, ah. 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 Ah, dahil sa, ah.
Mr. Speaker, I have a proposed amendment. 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 Mr. Speaker, I have a proposed amendment.
Yeah, from, ah. 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 Yeah, from, ah.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. Ramos. 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 Um, one minute suspension, Mr. Speaker. 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 Um, one minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, yes, well, ah, MP Ramos. 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 Ah, yes, well, ah, MP Ramos.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. 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 Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, yeah, that's recognized, please. 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 Yeah, yeah, that's recognized, please.
Ah, yes, are we only one minute suspension? 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 Or can I proceed with my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker? Or can I proceed with my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker? Or can I proceed with my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker? Or can I proceed with my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker? Or can I proceed with my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker? Or can I proceed with my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker?
Ah, no. Ah, no. Ah, no. Ah, no. Ah, no. Ah, no.
Yeah, yeah, ask for one minute suspension. 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 Yeah, yeah, ask for one minute suspension.
Ah, yes, one minute suspension. Ah, yes, one minute suspension. Ah, yes, one minute suspension. Ah, yes, one minute suspension. Ah, yes, one minute suspension. Ah, yes, one minute suspension.
Nice, MP Jamila Ramos on Zoom.
Uh, may I, uh, ask, uh, MP La Nagaletto take over the project later?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
MP Ramos, you may proceed now.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, um. Mr. Speaker, uh, sa pag susulong po natin sa BARM, sa pamamahala ng basura, bukod po sa memorandum ni Chief Minister, uh, meron dun din pong resolution ang National Solid Waste Management Commission, ang NSWMC Resolution Number one eight, uh, six three, series of, uh, two thousand twenty na uh, Mr. Speaker, naririnig po ba ako?
Yes, MP Ramos.
Sorry po, okay po, um, yun nga po, meron din pong resolution ang National Solid Waste Management Commission, ang NSWMC Resolution Number thirteen sixty-three, series of two thousand twenty, na pinapatigil din po ang paggamit ng single-use plastic products. Uh, na ispusada natin itong isama sa were-ask clauses upang mas palakasig pa at pagtibayin ang ating proposed Resolution Number two eight three. At ng sa gayon, ay, uh, magiging harmonize po 'yung efforts ng ating region sa mga pagsisikap nito sa buong bansa. At, uh, para po, uh, maging align din po tayo sa mga national policies, ganun din po sa uh, sa global, no? Uh, at ito po 'yung aking proposed, uh, amendment. Uh, I'd like to propose it to be inserted after third were-ask, 'yung were-ask, uh, the National Solid Waste Management Commission Resolution Number thirteen sixty-three, series of twenty twenty, mandates the Department of Environment and Natural Resources to prepare and implement the banning of the use of unnecessary single-use plastic products by national government agencies, local government units, and all other government-controlled offices. Base po sa aming pagsasaliksik din po, ang ibang mga ahensya po ng ating national government in the absence of, uh, uh, of, of a law. On this, ay, ito po 'yung kanilang nagiging reference sa pagi-implement ng pagban ng, uh, uh, ilig-alang use of, uh, plastic, uh, products po. Um, yun po ang aking proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, just to, uh, I, I have a counterproposal that, uh, uh, all other government-controlled corporations, GOC, government-owned and controlled corporations instead of offices.
Uh, yes, yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, sa, saan po 'yung banda, 'yung all?
The last, the last, uh, uh, line, all other government-owned and controlled corporations.
Yes, actually, that.
Offices, wala na yun, tanggalin na 'yung offices.
Uh, okay, all other government-controlled office, uh, yes, yes, Mr. Speaker.
And, uh, and government, uh, removed na rin 'yung all other, so, para kasama sila, yun.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
The, uh, proposal and the counterproposal are accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to close the period of amendment.
The period of, uh, when we serve it again.
No, yeah.
There are five.
The, Mr. Speaker, ang, yes po.
Yes, MP Ramos.
Yes, medyo choppy po ako. So you, you are saying, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Speaker, that we remove the, we replace it, ang nasa, ang nasa, uh, resolution po kasi ang exact na term na ginamit po nila is offices. So, uh, papalitan po ba natin ito? Is, 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 is that what you mean, uh, as your counterproposal, uh, Mr. Speaker? Medyo naputol po ako kanina, hindi ko po marinig.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, I'm okay with the counterproposal, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I believe that the proponent has counter-proposed a language and earlier, um, the interpolator, uh, the, the MP who proposes the amendment already accepted. Okay, Mr. Speaker, pending parliamentary.
Yes, there is a move to terminate the period of amendment, second.
I move to approve, proposed Resolution Number two eight three, subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to approve motion, motion two eighty, subject to style, this duly seconded, there being no objection. This said motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, next is proposed Resolution Number two nine five. May we request the Secretary General to please read the title, the authors, and the co-authors?
The Secretary General is so directed.
Proposed Resolution Number two hundred ninety-five entitled, Resolution Requesting the Ministry of Social Services and Development, MSSD, to furnish key ministries and updated database on the list of accredited and registered orphanage centers in BARM, and to submit comprehensive reports of services and assistance provided to them for purposes of consolidating, planning, and aligning of programs and services. Authors, members of the Parliament, Tawakal Mithimbang, Mujib Abu, Basir Uto, Swaeb Oranon, and Muhammad Kehli Antao. Co-authors, members of the Parliament, Dan Martin Kahalan, Osbert Alaudin, Eddie Ali, Don Mustafa Loong, Roylan Mendoza, Rasul Ismail, and Nabilah Margarita Pangandaman.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed Resolution Number two nine five to the Committee on Social Services.
There is a move to repair proposed Resolution Number two nine five to the Committee on Social Services and Development. This duly seconded, the said motion is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed Resolution Number three zero four. May we request the Secretary General to please read the title, the authors, and the co-authors?
The Secretary General is so directed.
Proposed Resolution Number three hundred four entitled, Resolution Urging the Ministry of Health to strengthen the voluntary blood donation program and blood transfusion services in the Bangsa Mor Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. Authors, members of the Parliament, Hasame Di Langgalem, Suwarto Ismael, Michael Mithimbang, Amel Bahar Mawallin. Co-authors, members of the Parliament, Hamid Malik, Nabiltan, John Anthony Lim, Muhammad Kehli Antao, Hatimil Hassan, Rasul Ismail, Tawakal Mithimbang, Basir Uto, Mujib Abu, Khalid Haji Abdoua, Swaeb Oranon, Jamila Ramos, Albakil Chikiri, and Adalajes Aminudin.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed Resolution Number three zero four to the Committee on Health.
There is a move to, uh, repair proposed Resolution Number three oh four, this duly seconded, this said motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, next is proposed Resolution Number three zero seven. May we request to read it together with proposed Resolution Number three zero nine, Mr. Speaker?
The Secretary General is so directed. Proposed Resolution Number three hundred seven entitled, Resolution Congratulating and Commending Samzoudin Abdul Rahman, the first weightlifter from the Bangsa Mor Autonomous Region for winning a gold medal in the eighty-one kilogram division of the Singapore Weightlifting International twenty twenty-three. Author, member of the Parliament, Baintan Ampatuan. Co-authors, members of the Parliament, Amel Bahar Mawallin, Lais Alamiya, Suwarto Angboluto, Don Mustafa Loong, Rasul Mitmug Junior, and Rasul Ismail. Three zero nine. Proposed Resolution Number three hundred nine entitled, Resolution Congratulating and Commending Samzoudin Abdul Rahman for winning gold medal in the eighty-one kilogram bodyweight category of the, of the Singapore Weightlifting International twenty twenty-three, held at the marquee, Singapore, and for giving pride and honor to the Bangsa Moro people. Author, member of the Parliament, Jamila Ramos. Co-author, member of the Parliament, Susanna Anayatin.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat proposed Resolution Numbers three zero seven, three zero nine, as simple resolutions, Mr. Speaker.
There, there is a move to treat those resolutions, simple resolution, it is duly seconded, the said motion is approved.
Move to consolidate proposed Resolution Numbers three zero seven and three zero nine.
There is a move to consolidate, uh, proposed Resolution Number three zero seven and three zero nine, this duly seconded, this said is approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize MP Susanna Anayatin to read on behalf the message of MP Jamila Ramos?
MP Susanna Anayatin is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, may we first recognize MP Baintan Ampatuan before MP?
MP Engineer Baintan Ampatuan is recognized, followed by MP Susanna Anayatin.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Um, I read the two resolutions and almost, uh, they have almost the same contents, Mrs. Speaker. Um, and therefore, Mr. Speaker, I yield to the other, uh, proponent to deliver the, uh, uh, sponsorship speech. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, uh, MP Susanna Anayatin is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Malukod ko pong binabati ang ating mga kasamahan sa Parlamento. Ang ating Chief Minister, Ahad Balawag Ibrahim, Deputy Chief Ministers, Speaker Attorney Pangalian Balindong, Deputy Speakers, Floor Readers, and Deputy Floor Readers, at iba pang mga opisyales ng BTA Parliament, mga panauhin, at mga tagasbaybay ng ating live sessions. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. Magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. Atin pong kinikilala at pinupuri ang galing na ipinamalas ng isa na namang atletang Bangsa Moro sa pagkatao ni Ginoong Samzoudin Abdul Rahman na nagkampyon sa eighty-one kilogram bodyweight category na sa Singapore Weightlifting International twenty twenty-three. Sa gitna ng maraming pagsubok at hamon sa ating hinaharap bilang Bangsa Moro, si Ginoong Abdul Rahman ay nagsisilbing isang tanglaw ng pag-asa. Ang kanyang kampyunato sa Singapore Weightlifting International twenty twenty-three ay hindi lamang tagumpay para sa kanya, kundi isang pambihirang karangalan para sa ating lahat. Ang kanyang pagwawagi ay nag-a, nagdadala ng pag-asa, hindi lamang sa kanya, ang atleta kung sa buong Bangsa Moro. Determinasyon at sakripisyo upang makamit ang kanyang pangarap. Pangarap na tilaid din ng maraming kabataang Bangsa Moro. Ang tagumpay na ito ni Ginoong Abdul Rahman ay nagsisilbing inspirasyon sa nakaraan at simbolo ng kadakilaan ng mga taong nagpupursige sa anumang larangan. Sa kanyang posts sa social media, hinihingi ni Ginoong Abdul Rahman ang suporta ng Bangsa Moro Government. Hinihingi niya ang aki suporta at wala sa kanyang kakayahan sapagkat ang kanyang paglalakpay ay malayo pa sa katapusan. Bilang kampyon sa Singapore Weightlifting International twenty twenty-three, Siya po ay magpapatuloy sa International Weightlifting Event nagaganapin sa bansang Poland sa darating na Agosto eighteen to twenty-six twenty twenty-three. Kaya't sa pagpapasan natin ng resolusyon ito, ating ipinakikita ang ating pagtangkilik sa mga larangan na nagpapamalas ng kahusayan ng Bangsa Moro. Ito ay patunay na handa tayong suportahan ang mga programa at inisiatibo na nagbibigay ng karangalan sa ating komunidad. Ipinaapaabot din ng ating, ang, ng ating pasasalamat at pagbati kay Ginoong Samzoudin Abdul Rahman isang huwaran mula sa Bangsa Moro na magiging inspirasyon at tanglaw sa ating kabataan tungo sa mas matagumpay na kinabukasan. Suportahan po natin at ipasa ngayon ang resolusyon ito. At susuportahan din po natin ang iba pang mga panukala na kikilala at magbibigay parangal at incentives sa mga indibidawa na kagaya ng Ginoong Abdul Rahman. Marami na po tayong naipasang resolusyon na nagbibigay papuri at binabati ang mga nagtatagumpay na Bangsa Moro. At magmi na rin po tayong mga kasamahan sa Parlamento na naghain ang mga panukala upang ma-institutionalize ang rekognisyon at incentives sa mga exceptional Bangsa Moro individuals na pumapasas sa licensure examinations na nagtatagumpay bilang sports achievers o bilang awarde sa iba't ibang larangan. Ang ating pagsuporta sa mga ito ay magsisilbing suporta sa lahat ng kabataang Bangsa Moro na patuloy na pinagbubutihan ng kanilang mga sarili at mga kakayahan upang makapagambag sa ating lipunan. See Mr. Samzoudin Abdul Rahman and all other accomplished young people who bring pride and honor to the Bangsa Moro people. We dedicate these measures to you. May you keep up the great work and keep being the instrument of hope and inspiration to all of us. Wa bismillahitaufik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. This is from MP, uh, Jamla Ramos. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, there appears to be no one who we, who would wish to interpolate. I therefore would like to make, um, omnibus motion to uh, dispense with the period of interpolation and debate as well as the period of amendment.
There is omnibus motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate and the period of amendment, this duly seconded, this said motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that all members of the Parliament present be included as co-authors, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to include all members of the Parliament as co-authors, this seconded. This said motion is approved.
I move to approve the consolidated resolutions, Mr. Speaker, subject to style.
There is a move to approve consolidated resolution, proposed Resolution Number three oh seven, three oh nine, subject to style, this duly seconded, this said motion is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed Resolution Number three one one. May we request the Secretary to please read the title, author, and co-authors?
The Secretary General is so directed. Proposed Resolution Number three hundred eleven entitled, Resolution Requesting the Supreme Court of the Philippines to facilitate the immediate organization of the Sharia High Court in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao BARM. Author, member of the Parliament, Don Mustafa Loong. Co-authors, members of the Parliament, Lais Alamiya, Baintan Ampatuan, Rasul Mitmug Junior, Amel Bahar Mawallin, Suwarto Angboluto, Rasul Ismail, Benjamin Luong, Japara Polo Mikael Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jose Lorena, Adalajesa Menudin, Jamila Ramos, Aspar Usman, Muhammad Kehli Antao, Eddie Ali, Tawakal Mithimbang, Mujib Abu, Swaeb Oranon, Basir Uto, Bay Maleha Kandaw, Michael Mithimbang, Dan Asnowi, and Mosbert Alaudin.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed Resolution Number three one one to the Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice.
There is a move to repair proposed Resolution Number three one one to the Committee on Bangsa Moro Justice, this duly seconded, this said motion is approved.
Next is proposed Resolution Number three one seven. May we request the Secretary General to please read the title, the author, and the co-authors?
The Secretary General is so directed. Proposed Resolution Number three hundred seventeen entitled, Resolution Calling on the Ministry of the Interior and Local Government, MILG, and the Civil Service Commission, Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, CSC BARM, to encourage all Bangsa Moro ministries, commissions, and offices to fully implement and strictly comply with the provisions of Republic Act Number eleven zero thirty-two, otherwise known as an act promoting ease of doing business and efficient delivery of government services by streamlining the current systems and procedures of the government services of their respective offices. Author, member of the Parliament, Don Mustafa Loong. Co-authors, members of the Parliament, Lais Alamiya, Baintan Ampatuan, Rasul Mitmug Junior, Amel Bahar Mawallin, Suwarto Angboluto, Rasul Ismail, Benjamin Luong, Japara Polo Mikael, Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Jose Lorena, Adalajesa Menudin, Jamila Ramos, Aspar Usman, Muhammad Kehli Antao, Eddie, Tawakal Mithimbang, Mujib Abu, Swaeb Oranon, Basir Uto, Bay Maleha Kandaw, and Michael Mithimbang.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed Resolution Number three one seven to the Committee on Rules.
There is a move to repair proposed Resolution Number three one seven to the Committee on Rules, this duly seconded, this said motion is approved.
Next is proposed Resolution Number three two three. May we request the Secretary General, General to please read the title, the author, and the co-author?
The Secretary General is so directed. Proposed Resolution Number three hundred twenty-three entitled, Resolution Urging the Bangsa Moro Government to Adapt Policies and Procedures to Recognize the Use of Digital Signatures. Author, member of the Parliament, Don Mustafa Loong. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Lais Alamiya, Benjamin Luong, Baintan Ampatuan, Rasul Mitmug Junior, Amel Bahar Mawallin, Suwarto Angboluto, Rasul Ismail, John Anthony Lim, Japara Polo Mikael Matalam, Michael Mithimbang, Hatimil Hassan, Tawakal Mithimbang, Albakil Chikiri, Adalajesa Menudin, Abdul Wahab Pak, and Nabilah Margarita Pangandaman.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed Resolution Number three two three to the Committee on Rules.
There is a move to repair proposed Resolution Number three two three to the Committee on Rules, this duly seconded, this said motion is approved.
Next is proposed Resolution three two four. May we request the Secretary? May we request the Secretary General to please read the title, the author and the co-authors.
The Secretary General is so directed. Proposed Resolution Number Three Hundred Twenty Four entitled Resolution Urging the Ministry of Finance and Management, M F B M, to promote and adapt policies and procedures to recognize the use of multi-budgeting and posals. Author, Member of the Parliament, Don Mustafa Loong. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Aliza Alamiya, Benjamin Luong, Baintan ng Batuan, Rasool Mitmoog Junior, Bahar Mawalil, Soharto Ambuluto, Rasool Ismail, John Anthony Lim, Japara Polo, Michael Matalam, Michael Mitimbang, Hatimil Hassan, Tawakal Mitimbang, Albakil, Jikiri, Abdallah Jisa Menoden, Muhammad Kelly Antao, and Nabila Margarita Pangandaman.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed Resolution Number Three Two Four to the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management.
There is a move to refer proposed Resolution Number Three Two Four to the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management. This truly seconded. The said motion is approved.
Last proposed resolution is Three Two Six. Mr. Speaker, may request the Secretary General to please read the title, the author and the co-authors.
The Secretary General is so directed. Proposed Resolution Number Three Hundred Twenty Six entitled Resolution Urging the Ministry of Health to Conduct Awareness Campaign on the Health Risk Associated with the Youth and Consumption of BetelNath Oil Mama in Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Bar. Author, Member of the Parliament, Mustafa Loong. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Aliza Alamiya, Baintan ng Batuan, Rasool Mitmoog Junior, Amel Bahar Mawalil, Soharto Ambuluto, Rasool Ismail, Benjamin Luong, Japara Polo, Michael Matalam, Abdul Karim Miswari, Joselo Rena, Abdallah Jisa Menoden, Yamila Ramos, Aspar Usman, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Eddie Ali, Tawakal Mitimbang, Mujib Abu, Suayb Oranon, Basir Utu, Bay Maleha Kandaw, Michael Mitimbang, Basit Abbas, Muslimin Jakilan, and Susana Anayatin.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed Resolution Number Three Two Six to the Committee on Health.
There is a move to repair proposed Resolution Number Three Two Six to the Committee on Health. This truly seconded. The said motion is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is Committee Report Number Twelve submitted by the Committee on Health on Proposed Resolution Number Fifty Seven entitled A Resolution Urging the Bangsa Moro Government through the Ministry of Health to Conduct Visibility Study on the Possible Procurement and Acquisition of Low-Cost, High-Efficient Oxygen Generator Among the Twenty-Six Hospitals of BARM. Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider Committee Report Number Twelve for deliberation, Mr. Speaker.
May we recognize first the Chairman of the Committee on Health, MP Kader MC Rending, to read the Committee Report of this proposed resolution.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Wa billahiminasyaitan Rajim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for recognizing me. Our Presiding Speaker, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leader, Deputy Floor Leaders, Distinguished Colleagues. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu. A pleasant afternoon to everyone. It is my honor to report actually this August study, the Committee Report Number Twelve, prepared by the Committee on Health pertaining to the proposed Resolution Number Fifty Seven entitled A Resolution Urging the Bangsa Moro Government through the Ministry of Health to Conduct Visibility Study on the Possible Procurement and Acquisition of Low-Cost, High-Efficiency Oxygen Generator Among the Twenty-Five Twenty-Six Hospitals in the B A R M M. Mr. Speaker, I would like to begin by thanking the Vice Chairman, Doc-Chairman Dr. Hashimi Dilangalin and Dr. Marjani Makasalong and the Honorable Members of the Committee on Health for their participation and commitment to uplift the healthcare system in the Bangsa Moro through legislative measures. And so, this resolution. Upon deliberation of members of the committee, considering its importance in the management of patients, we jointly approve this resolution without amendments. Mr. Speaker, the approval of this resolution is by reason of, in quote-unquote, necessity. Oxygen is a medicine that is essential to life, used as adjunct on intervention to patients at all levels of care from primary to critical cases, including, but not limited to cerebral spinal, cardiovascular, respiratory or pulmonary, gastrointestinal, renal, and general surgical, maternal, and childcare, to name a few. Oxygen, as an essential component of life, is also an essential component to healthcare facilities. Without it, we die, and so are our hospitals and health facilities. With insufficient supply of medical oxygen, we cannot serve effectively our patients and thus leads to poorer prognosis solely due to inadequacy in ideal hospital management. According to the World Health Organization, the lifesaving power of medical oxygen can significantly increase the chances of recovery. Pneumonia alone kills eight hundred thousand people per year, and it is estimated that twenty to forty percent of this can be prevented with availability of oxygen therapy, Insha Allah. During the COVID nineteen pandemic, it accelerated the demand for oxygen, causing shortages all over the world. Not just this country, but and we in the region were not spared. Mr. Speaker, the conduct of the feasibility study by the Ministry of Health in procuring and acquiring a low-cost, low-maintenance, but with high-efficiency oxygen generator is an urgent need to assure a constant availability and supply of oxygen for our patients. Even our transportation and access were all restricted and obstructed. Right now, we have a total of twenty-seven hospitals all over B A R M M. More than half are in the island provinces. Bringing the right and prompt treatment of patients in the heart of their communities is a testament of a responsive governan-government anchored on the principles of functional and moral governance that is accountable to the public. Sukran kathiran. Wa billahitawfik wal hidayah. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to move that we consider Committee Report Number Eleven Twelve for consideration, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to adopt Committee Report Number Two, Committee Report Number Twelve for consideration of this BTA Parliament. This truly seconded. The said motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member of the parliament who wishes to interpolate, I would like to make an omnibus motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate and the period of amendment on Committee Report Number Twelve. This truly seconded. The Chair declares this am is approved.
I move to approve Committee Report Number Twelve, subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to propose Committee Report Number Twelve on Proposed Resolution Number Fifty Seven, subject to style. This truly seconded. The said motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, MP Ramos wishes to be recognized.
MP Ramos is recognized.
For Mr. Speaker, I already message in the chat box that I wish to be recognized because I have just some clarifications with our good committee chair regarding his committee report. This is actually in support also to the measure, Mr. Speaker.
We already closed the interpolation and debate. If there is a proposed amendment, you can consider this on the on the style. Maybe on the style of the proposal.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Speaker, I have proposed amendment. I was just submitted to the to the secretary for consideration, Mr. Speaker.
This truly noted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may we re-request that all of those in Zoom, on Zoom, who have amendments already type their amendments in the chat box, Mr. Speaker, because I don't see that it was appearing in the chat box.
I will. Thank you.
Henceforth, yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, next is Committee Report Number Twenty-One on Proposed Resolution Number Forty-Two submitted by the Committee on Rules. Entitled A Resolution Urging the National Mapping and Resource Information Authority, or NAMRIA, to finalize the delineation and demarcation of Bangsa Moro Municipal and Regional Waters and Zones of Joint Cooperation in the Sulusi and Moro Gulf. Mr. Speaker, as Chairperson of the Committee on Rules, on behalf of the committee, we present to you the Committee Report, which was originally filed as Proposed Resolution Number Forty-Two by Members of the Parliament Attorney John Anthony Lim, Attorney Joselo Rena, Attorney Nabiltan, and Attorney Paisalint Tago on September twenty-six twenty-twenty-two. Subsequently, on November twenty-one twenty-twenty-two, it was referred to the Committee on Rules and subjected to deliberation during seventeenth committee meeting on June twenty-three twenty-twenty-three. This is an important resolution, one that carries significant implications for the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. The Bangsa Moro Waters has abundant marine resources, which could be a source of revenue not only for the Bangsa Moro region, but for the entire country. The resolution urges the NAMRIA to finalize the delineation and demarcation of Bangsa Moro Municipal and Regional Waters as well as the Zones of Joint Cooperation in the Sulusi and Moro Gulf. This resolution holds great importance for the sustainable development and economic prosperity of the region. Mr. Speaker, I am also joined by Member of the Parliament Attorney John Anthony Lim, who is on Zoom, Mr. Speaker. May we recognize MP Lim.
MP Jan Lim is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuhu, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Chairman of the Committee on Rules, thank you for the opportunity. Fellow Members of the Parliament, this representation will address any interpolation, if any, on the Committee Report, which essentially approved our Resolution Number Forty-Two with fellow Members of the Parliament Attorneys Joselo Rena, Nabiltan, and Paisalin Tago. This representation will answer any interpolation in the best way I know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we Committee Report Number Twenty-One for deliberation, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to adopt proposed Resolution Number There is a move to adopt Committee Report Number Twenty-One. This truly seconded. The said motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we request if anyone from Zoom would like to interpolate? Otherwise, we will move for the, okay. I move to open the period of interpolation, Mr. Speaker.
There is a move to open the period of interpolation and debate.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize MP Soharto Ambuluto.
MP Soharto Ambuluto is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, we definitely support the resolution. In fact, this was earlier filed during the first days of first sessions of the first BTA Parliament. Now, I would simply like to be, you know, simply seek enlightenment on the status of the joint body that is supposed to delineate the boundaries of the Zones of Cooperation, Mr. Speaker. So, if the good proponent or the majority floor leader would like to enlighten us as to the status, where is where is the demarcation and delineation at this point in time? It was supposed to be done within thirty days after our, the convening of our first parliament, Mr. Speaker.
May we recognize Tony Jetling on the status on the
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the record, I will read the preliminary reports made by the by NAMRIA. According to accordingly, the there were some issues and concerns that that were found that prevented the body to proceed with the finalization of the demarcation. And I will read these issues and concerns. First, boundary disputes between BARM and non-BarM LGUs. Majority of the coastal land boundaries between BARM and non-BarM LGUs are not yet settled. Second issue and concern, the need of municipal water delineation guidelines for non-BarM LGUs with offshore islands. Third issue and concern, the need for an official guideline for BARM municipal waters and delineation or delimitations. Since BARMs has its own Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries, and Agrarian Reform, it is unclear if DA or Department Order issued by D N R shall also cover the BARM area. And finally, final issue and concern, Philippine claim over Saba. Accordingly, it says that the nineteen thirty U S U K thirty limits only referred to the land territory and not on the extent of waters that may fall under the jurisdiction of the islands and RAS. So, with these issues and concern, the NAMRIA provided recommendations. For the records, Mr. Speaker, we can provide with the, we can provide these recommendations to the Members of the Parliament later on. So, their recommendation was the settlement in boundary disputes between the LGUs usually takes a long time and may hinder the finalization of the Bangsa Moro waters and Zone of Joint Cooperation. They recommended that the demarcation of Bangsa Moro Waters and CJC proceed, however, with the coletilla that will be revised or finalized in accordance with the result of the settlement of coastal land boundary dispute between BARM and non-BarM LGUs. They also recommended that it will be helpful if the guidelines in the delineation or delimitation between municipal waters in non-BarM LGUs with offshore islands are released at the soonest time by the before of the DA. Thirdly, they, in compliance with Memorial No. circular number one sixty-two two thousand eight, the preliminary delineation of Bangsa Moro Waters where Saba shows full extent of fifteen kilometers and nineteen kilometers from the coastline and the archipelagic principle of D N R A O two thousand one seventeen was used. The proposal shall be vetted by the Department of Foreign Affairs and other concerned government agency. And finally, their recommendation is to meet consult between technical persons from NAMRIA and BARM representatives to facilitate the final demarcation of Bangsa Moro Waters and the Zone of Joint Cooperation. In essence, Mr. Speaker, the NAMRIA proposed that they need some urging that they can already proceed with the finalization of the demarcation lines, no? But it's up to us, it's up to the adult committee to put an imprimatur on that recommendation that they have given. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, are I to be, are we to be informed or advised that basically the NAMRIA has already completed its part of the job, but it's simply the joint body was not yet delineated? The was not approved or acted upon the recommendations made by NAMRIA as already enumerated by the good proponent, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, as a matter of fact, they have already made that demarcation points, no? Demarcation lines. I do not know the technical description or the technical name of this activity or, no? But they have already provided a map in fact where it show the municipal waters as well as the regional waters, as well as Zones of Joint Cooperation in the Sulusi as well as in the Moro Gulf. So, stop lang ho.
Basically, my concern is that, I actually, we share, we share your concerns. And in fact, this has been one of our pressing concerns since the start of the first parliament. But you see, the resolution is urging NAMRIA to finalize the delineation. When we know for a fact that it is the joint body that is supposed to do this, the, I think the technical preparation meets and bounds. Am I correct in understanding in my appreciation that per your earlier manifestations, the meets and bounds, the points have already been submitted to the joint body, but there are some non-technical, but in fact political issues that would have to be resolved? So, do we, uh, mi- brother, a brother, so, uh, are we, uh, simple lang, brother, uh, is, uh, what is it, is there anything left for NAMRIA do on the matter of delineation? What is it that is left for the NAMRIA to do as far as delineation and demarcation of our Bangsa-Moro result? Delineation lang ah, so ang resolution natin is only limited to delineation and demarcation as a function of NAMRIA, not yet the function of the joint body. So meron pa bang gagawin, Mister Speaker?
Uh, well taken, the, the question is well taken. When we proceed with the number four, no, they, they in fact recommended that they have to sit down again, no? Yung pagkakaintiko in layman's term. Consultations or te- meetings between technical persons from NAMRIA and barm representative is highly recommended to facilitate the final demarcation of Bangsa-Moro waters and Zones of Joint Cooperation. So essentially, you're urging them to, to meet or no, to sit down on this to finalize the, uh, the demarcation as enshrined in the Bangsa-Moro organic law. Uh, whatever details, kuna ng pagkaano, mga technical, that is something that the this presentation is not privy, but, uh, we are earnestly urging them to finalize, no? To, to finally sit down and finalize this demarcation.
Good, good brother, uh, Mister Speaker, may we inquire? Basically, my in, my question, Mister Speaker, is, is it our resolution is directed on NAMRIA? Should the proper object of our resolution be the joint body, as you were saying, them, the technical people sitting together and finalizing the demarcation? Kasi our resolution, Mister Speaker, is only directed at NAMRIA and not at the joint body, Mister Speaker?
Uh, i- i- in, in that case, uh, well, the interpolator can, uh,
So, Mister Speaker, uh, may we request the proponent? If I'm, I correct that, uh, in view of the recent developments, no? Superbining events, we may have to de- redirect the focus of our resolution to the joint body and not anymore only the NAMRIA? Am I correct in that? I'm not suggesting, Mister Speaker, ah, I'm not suggesting anything, Mister Speaker, but I'm asking the, uh, good brother, the proponent, whether in view of recent events, as you were saying, the recommendation for them to sit down together and finalize, is it not now more proper that we redirect and refocus the resolution not only to NAMRIA but to the joint body, as you have already, as I understand you have already intimated in your manifestation, Mister Speaker?
Yeah, the, because N- NAMRIA is the lead agency, that's why the resolution is directed at them. But, uh, if there are, uh, if the interpolers suggest amendment, uh, this representation is willing to, uh, then of course, the other members of the, uh, committee, as well as the proponents are, are willing to listen.
Uh, yes, Mister Speaker, uh, dun lang po muna ako. Kasi ang tama po yun, nagkakaintindihan po yata kami po ng ating proponent. Ang aking question lang po, eh, wala. Parang sa report kanina, eh, parang ang recommendation ay pagsamahin na po uh, to recom- we are recommending that the technical people of both sides already sit down to finalize the demarcation from the ano, because, uh, mukhang yun ay yun yata ang incidents, incident ng ano to. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker, and I will propose amendments later, subject of course to whether I understood correctly the manifestation of the proponent, Mister Speaker. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Yes.
Mister Speaker, I move to terminate the period of interpolation.
The period of interpolation is terminated.
Uh, mo- I move to open the period of amendment, Mister Speaker.
The period of amendment is open.
MP Ambuluto wishes to amend, Mister Speaker.
MP Ambuluto is recognized.
Yes, Mister Speaker, I would like to propose only with leave of the proponent and the committee. Uh, a res- uh, if urging instead of the national mapping and resource information, instead of the national mapping, uh, the joint body on the Zones of Cooperation?
Zones of Joint Cooperation.
The joint body on the joint, uh, on the Zone of Joint Cooperation? Uh, alisin na yung authority in NAMRIA? Yan, okay. Yan, okay. And then, to the Bangsa-Mor- Okay. Uh, okay, and then, let's go to the finu- penultimate, the where for paragraphs? Kita-kita ng konti? Uh-huh. So ganito, yung NAMRIA be replaced with the joint body yung uli copya, joint body for the zone on the Zones of Joint Cooperation? Uh. And then, uh, sinong representative natin dito? Uh, Mapar? Okay. And then resolve further that instead of NAMRIA, Mapar? Instead of NAMRIA, Mapar be the Ministry of Agriculture? Hindi, ganun naman. Uh, okay. The resolve further that the chair for the Bangsa-Mo- oh, that the Bangsa-Moro, uh, ma- uh, Secretariat, yes, please. That the chair that the chair for the Bangsa-Moro of the joint body on the Zones of Cooperation be requested and be bilang bilang bi, be requ- be requested to update. Okay na yan, ma'am? Update the sta- parliament, the status yan, okay? Uh, yun lang po, Mister Speaker, Madam Floor Leader. Uh, that's the pro- that's the proposal.
Yes, what is the, uh?
May, may roadmap talaga? May roadmap talaga? May roadmap?
What is the response of the proponent, uh, accepted? MP Jetlim?
Mister Speaker, do I have the authority of the, uh, Committee Chairman?
Yes. Can I proceed now?
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, the amendment number one, since it is in consonant with Section Eighteen, Article Thirteen of the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law, the same is, uh, accepted.
The proposed amendment is accepted. The Secretariat is directed to change all the, uh, mention of, uh, NAMRIA to the, uh, the joint body on the Zones of Cooperation on the whereas provision of this, uh, resolution, subject to style. Okay, the proposed, the second, uh, amendment, MP Jetlim on the resolve further.
Uh, Mister Speaker, since the pro- since the proposal is merely a directory, the same is hereby also, uh, accepted.
The proposed amendment is accepted.
Uh, at this point, Mister Speaker, uh, may I, uh, just, uh, pose an inquiry? If this is still appropriate to put an additional final resolution on the, uh, therefore clauses?
The proponent, the proponent proposed amendment?
If it is still, uh, in order, uh, I would, uh, the proposal would be to so- resolve finally to furnish all members of the joint body of this resolution.
Yes, may the Secretariat to write?
Yes, Mister Speaker, as Chairperson of the Committee on Rules, and this being a committee report, I, uh, accept, Mister Speaker, the additional amendment of, uh, MP Lim, Mister Speaker.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker, that's why I, I ask if it is still, if it's still in order. But, uh, thank you very much, Mister Speaker, thank you, Committee Chair, and thank you as well to the Parliament.
Mister Speaker, I move to, uh, terminate the period of amendment, Mister Speaker.
The period of amendment is terminated.
Mister, Mister Speaker, I move to adopt Committee Report Number Twenty-One, subject to style.
There is a move to approve, uh, Committee Report Number Twenty-One on proposed Committee Report Number Three, uh, Twenty-One, yeah? Uh, this duly seconded, the said motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, before I move for adjournment, may I remind members of the parliament that, uh, Thursday is Privilege Speech Day, if you have, if you wish to be listed as, uh, one of those who would like to deliver a privilege speech, please submit in advance a copy of the privilege speech. Um, in that, uh, along that line, Mister Speaker, I move to adjourn the session until Thursday, one P M.
Thursday, session is adjourned until Thursday, one P M.